All right, it's time 31:00 AM. May 13th, Monday morning. We'll bring this regular session of Central County Commissioners' Court to order. Let the regular show. Larry Hall, Dewayne Johnson, Danny Chambers, Kenneth Wood, Wade Bush are all present. Would you please join us in the allegiance of the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the address of the flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, to Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
You may be seated if you like. Larry, would you say a prayer for the court?
We have a call to thank this state of Jesus, thank you all, and thank you so much. Father, we pray for wisdom and hope that you touch our hearts and will give us the right decisions in cases like mine.
Item number three, approved minutes of the previous Commissioners' Court meeting. Larry up ahead.
Yes, it's page 18, 29, and making six. Correct? I'll make the motion.
I have motion by Larry to approve the meeting. Second, I have a second by Kenneth. Any further questions or discussion? All in favor of said motion? That's five, four, zero against. Item number four, presentation by Lori Gray regarding Pediatric Cancer Awareness Month of September. There you go. Would you want to come up here to the... Will you make sure that the red button is on? Will you go to speak to me online?
That's it.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right. Well, I appreciate you guys having us and appreciate your time. My name's Lori Gray. Lori Gray Photography. I'm a local photographer here in town. My daughter, Avery, is here with us. She's 12. She's in Plano Junior High. She's a pediatric cancer survivor. And we spend a lot of our time and money in September trying to promote pediatric cancer awareness month. And I've also partnered with FCCLA from the high school. And I'll let them introduce themselves here in a second. But basically, what we're trying to do is gold out the square for September, similar to what was done in April with the blue with child abuse. And we've already gotten permission from the schools to gold out the schools. And we'd also like to do that with signs and banners and things around the square. So FCCLA officers, would you guys come on up and introduce yourselves as well?
So my name's Colin. This is Jordan. And this is Ashlyn Perry. We're part of the Glen Rose FCCLA chapter. And last September, we actually did a project regarding childhood abuse, childhood cancer awareness. And we ended up raising over $1,000 for it. And we started this because my brother, actually about a year and a half ago, passed away due to childhood cancer. We thought this would be a good way to honor his name. So yeah, like Lori said, we want to make it bigger and better this year. And instead of just involving the school, involve the entire community. And we think it would be a great idea to have a small event and to decorate the square for this. I think that would be fun.
Very good. And I'm sure you all probably have already heard this group before. Be careful with deep running. You probably will be running stakes in the ground, I don't imagine. I don't know exactly how you will be doing. Watch all the water lines. If you need to get with maintenance and electrical lines, just if the court chooses to move forward, just, you know, feel free to get a hold of some of us before you start putting the thing in the ground so you know where it's at.
Very good.
All right. Anything else at all for the presentation?
I don't think so.
Thank you all very much. We do appreciate it. There you go. Say us a little bit more.
So basically, I just want to talk more about what we did for our project. So for our project, we held a pep rally at the school and to just bring awareness to students. And we also did concession stands. And so we raised money that way. And then at a home football game during the third quarter on the home side, we walked up and down the stands and collected money for child cancer awareness. So we already just started spreading awareness around the community through that, through raising money for our project. So this is just kind of furthering that to raise more awareness and just have like the entire community be aware of child cancer and wanting to donate money, hopefully, to child cancer research because it's really underfunded. So...
Make it a little bigger, a little bit.
Yes, definitely. Because it starts with the community.
All right. Anything else? All right. Hey, thank you all very much. Thank you all for telling us. All right. Item number five is actually discuss and take action presentation of Lori Gray and her associates who just gave us about allowing them to decorate the square in September like we do in April for child abuse. If we so wish to do that, do I have a motion to do that? I have a motion by Larry to allow Lori Gray and her group to decorate the square in September. Second, I have a second by Kenneth. Any further questions or discussion for this group? All in favor of said motion? That's five, four, zero against. Again, thank you all very much. All right. Item number six, discuss, take action on the final plat before till addition. I believe the gentleman's here today. If you have any questions, and I believe that's probably Kenneth presenting it.
Well, we got all the paperwork together and we've got four permits here from Texas God, where he put the highways in on one port, one side. And everything from much in order will come to decide the two miles.
All right. I make motion to accept the final plat. I have a motion by Kenneth to accept the final plat. Do I have a second? I have a second by Wade Bush. Do we have any further questions or discussion for Kenneth? Are the gentlemen actually doing the development? All in favor of said motion? That's five, four, zero against. Kenneth asks if we go ahead and just take a minute and sign this. The gentleman's ready to go file it and get the job started, it sounds like.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
We appreciate it.
So if y'all don't mind, we'll sign it right quick so you can take the final and get it, and then we'll move on.
Is overall just a good trip?
Not really.
The legislative talk, please, in line with...
Yes, probably say please. It wasn't in case but it was in line with the board. Thanks, sir. All right. Item number seven, discuss, take action on contract reflections with CAD from Central Pleasant District. It's the same contract as we've had in the past. Our current runs up to September 30th of 2019. We're changing the dates to coincide with actually the reflections, actually made. It run from February the 1st of 2019 to January 31st of 2020. And that way, it will hopefully clean up the year and the collecting when it closes out. But also that everything remains the same, they're just changing the dates. So do I have a motion to renew the contract or just change the dates on the current contract with the Central Pleasant District? I have a motion by Larry. Do I have a second? I have a second by Dewayne. Any further questions or discussion that maybe I can answer? All in favor of said motion? Excuse me, five, four, zero against. I'm crying. If you don't mind, we'll get you to sign that before we file it. And after you sign it, and I'll get Wes to sign it, and then we will take that and get filed. All right? Number eight, discuss, take action on how Somerville County advertises for bids. Eddie, I believe is that the one you're going to present?
All right, good morning. I'm not sure how in-depth you guys want me to go. I haven't met with Brian yet, but there's... The state has a centralized master bidders list that to get on that and to publish bids to thousands of contractors across the state as well as across the nation because there's third-party vendors actually tied to that central master bidders list to see what RFPs and things go out from the counties and the states. It's $100 a year to get on that list, and I'm not sure if we're doing that right now. Okay. So that would be the first thing I would recommend is to get on the centralized master bidders list so that when we publish RFPs or any kind of bids, purchasing for products that'll go out to statewide across the state, anybody that's on that list. In addition to that, we have options like Facebook and Twitter. There's been some discussion on that. In order to do that, we have to set up accounts for the county to do those things. There's no cost associated with, you know, opening up a Twitter or Facebook account, obviously. But that's pretty much it on that show. Best thing we can do is just get on the controller's state bid list that when we publish. So we'll publish on our website. We can submit it to Facebook or whatever, but you're going to get most of your response through the centralized master bidders list.
Well, there's part of it, you know, we need to get more local interest, you know, surrounding towns and stuff to be able to bid on this work.
Right.
Do you think that that bidders list will accommodate that? Or is it going to get more people waiting, you know, by the way?
In my opinion, most of the people that do business with government agencies or schools, they're on that list. So they'll get automatic notifications. We can also publish that on our Facebook or county website that, you know, to register to be on that list so you get notifications.
That's cool. Statually, we have to continue on with our newspaper. It has in the paper, we know.
Right. Local government code doesn't say necessarily a local paper, but it says a paper of general circulation. We monitor, you know, what that is. I mean, the hospital district in the past has utilized a Star Telegram in a pinch for time. That's a pretty expensive proposition. You know, the two papers that I would think that would be of, quote, "general circulation" here would be obviously The Reporter and The Hood County News. We kind of check to see how many 76043 ZIP addresses they have from time to time. It's been a couple of years, but last time it wasn't, I mean, it was about 100 for The Hood County News, so it was kind of...
I mean, I would think the newspaper, I don't mean anything bad, but it's minimal interest on reading a newspaper these days.
Exposure.
So I mean, I know we need to do what we're required to do, but we need other avenues because even last year when we sent the bids out for the expo on the concession, you know, they didn't come in. We did the workout at the golf course. We got, we had two bids to work on. We've got to get more and follow them from the outside.
Right. And on the concessions, I mean, I know for sure, we literally, my office contacted every restaurant, not only here, but a lot of them in Granbury and, you know, made, you know, positive contacts. Hey, we'd like for you to think about submitting a...
And I had a lady call me, called the office probably two weeks ago, maybe three, asking about that expo. Especially if it's away from here, she's not local.
Yeah.
So we can get it out better.
So if we look for this, we could do Facebook, Twitter, and what the state board is also.
Yeah, state list. And on average, from my experience, you get about 30 to 40 bids when you publish something on that site.
Okay. That'd be great.
Well, in light of all this, do I have a motion to move forward with new avenues for advertising? I make that motion. I have a motion by Dewayne. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Wade. Do we have any further questions or discussion for Eddie or...
I would just make the request that if we do have like a Facebook and Twitter, that Eddie be the sole one responsible for posting so that we know who to hang if they're the problem.
Thanks, Brian.
No comment, just...
No comment.
There you go. All right. I have a motion and a second. Do we have any further questions or discussion? All in favor of moving forward? That's five, four, zero against. Item number nine, discuss, take action on RFP for landscaping. I think we're taking contracts and interviews and whatever under consideration during executive session, so we'll deal with that one after executive session. Item number 10, discuss, take action on fireworks resolution, which is dealing with Memorial Day on July 4th. We'll take care of two of it one time if y'all so desire. The first one will be from, let's see, May 22nd, ending midnight of May 27th. That'll be for the Memorial Day event. And then for July 4th, it'll be June 24th through July 4th at midnight unless there comes a reason that we have a drought and we have a reason for a burn ban, then as we know last year, we may have to cancel it. But we can cancel it up at any time through a burn ban or on midnight of the 27th of May or the 4th of July. So do I have a motion to approve these resolutions for fireworks?
Go move.
I have a motion by Wade.
Second.
I have a second by Kenneth. Any further questions or discussion? I probably said that fast, didn't I, Michelle?
I got it.
You got it?
Yes, sir.
All right. All in favor of said motion? That's five, four, zero against. Would y'all pass this back to me when you're done? And I'll get Wes on the paperwork side. All right. Item number 11, discuss, take action on brush truck for Somerville County Fire Department. So Mark doesn't get blamed for this in the future. We'll put the blame where it lies. And the commissioner approached me about this. We've had a brush truck out of commission for a while. I was asked if I consider using some of the $50,000 emergency management to put toward that brush truck. I discussed with Brian Jones about it in detail. We discussed, he's got an item or two that he would like to purchase besides, but he has no objection moving forward with this as far as a brush truck. I didn't either. So that's the reason I brought it to the court, to see if they so desire to do this. And if they do, then I understand it's a newer chassis and frame, and then we can use the old brush bed and put it on the new one. Is that correct?
Correct. The truck that's in question is a grant truck that we got from the state. It's an old military truck. And right from the very beginning, it was a lemon. I think we've replaced the motor, you know, the drive shafts and everything on it. And we bought a parts truck to try to keep it going. And so we're going to be replacing it with another surplus truck that's $7,000 roughly. So it's not a huge deal because we can take all the equipment off the old truck and just pick it up and move it on to the new truck that we buy. If the court so moves.
So we're talking about taking seven of the 50, is that what you're...
Yes. Probably better budget 75 if they vote to do that. So we'll have a little cushion in it.
Well, we'll have to paint it. Yeah, so you're probably talking, I mean, if we're talking about the total package, you got $7,000 for the truck. I think we spent about $1,200, $1,500 painting it, which is the law. We have to, we can't be camouflaged anymore, can't be military covers. And then this...
Whatever other parts you're going to need.
Yeah, whatever.
For a change.
Paying wildfire to move all the electrical components over, the radios and the lights and sirens and all that jazz.
Is that like 10 grand or something like that?
Seven plus 15, 85. I'd say 10 would do it.
Then we'd better get some back, right?
Sir?
I'm just more smart.
I mean, that's a small price to pay for the, for the, what we do with those trucks. I mean, we've got trucks that were built in the 60s that we're still using, 60s and 70s. Those military trucks are ideal for what we do out in the pastures, lighting fire.
And then that's the one that we take it out and we have to go get it?
That's the one.
It keeps breaking down?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's not just any good as it is?
It breaks down on every call.
Right.
Yeah, it's, it was just a limit.
We've been fighting this for a while.
Right. And then we got trucks that are 50 something years old that are still rocking along, so it's just...
All right. In light of all that, do I have a motion to move forward with purchasing the frame chassis for the brush truck and then outfitting it correctly?
This is the money coming from?
From emergency management funds, yes.
Now, we've already binged that once on taking it from contingency.
Yeah, no, well, I don't want contingency.
Yeah, we're changing what we agreed before.
Yes. I don't want out of contingency.
Yeah.
And then we'll look at what we've got left in emergency management funds when we get done with this to see if we can move forward with the small trailer that he's looking at later on, or if we'll take that up after you tell me where we're at, okay?
And what is, well, I don't want to interfere with the motion second here, so I'll wait for the question.
All right, when we get to the discussion. All right. Do I have a motion to extend up to $10,000 on the resping a new brush truck? I make that motion. I have a motion by Dewayne. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Wade. Now, any further questions or discussion?
And then what is the, what is the intention of the old chassis? I mean, are we under contractual to give it back to them or...
No, we've met that obligation. It'll, it'll go out to pasture and be a parts truck.
All right. I have a first, motion and a second. Any further questions or discussion? All in favor said motion? That's five, four, zero against. Item number 12, we've discussed the budget planning calendar. I think everybody has seen what we handed out. Main thing what I want to know is like on the main departments, I figure, you know, the sheriff's department, the fire department, the road and bridge, things like that. Maybe we'll have workshops during that time and the whole Commissioners' Court, those that wish to be here, that way we can have two or more in the room if you so desire. And you don't have to tell me right now, y'all discuss it and then get the dates to me. Actually, what I need to know is who that y'all, the whole group would like to meet with. You know, I know the sheriff's department, fire department, road and bridge, who's another big...
Golf course and expo.
Golf course and expo. So what I'll try to do is come up with a date, schedule it, we'll schedule all those on one day. The other ones like library and the ones that Brian and I can meet with and then, you know, always present to y'all during June anyhow. Always bring it to you before we ever file the budget with Michelle. But I just want to make sure that we get all the major ones that any of y'all, the court wants to sit in on from the very beginning. And we can discuss it all the way through. So just, y'all put a pencil over that, think it over. We have set it up for the last week in May and the first week in June, and I'll just schedule all the major ones probably on one day. If we need to, I'll schedule it on two days. All right? Just look at your schedules, see what everybody's here, and we'll move forward from there. If you will, it'd be 20, be giving them like two or three days, and then we'll make one or two of those days work. Okay? Is that fair?
The, the, I noticed by the calendar, you have 10.
Uh, June 11.
No, June, June.
All right. Well, we don't do any of the major ones then because after Memorial Day, we come back. I've got like, what, Tuesdays and Fridays set up to do at the end of May. I think Wade may be gone some of that time.
That's what you meant?
Yes, part of it. And then the first week of June, which will be like the 1st to the 7th. So we'll get the major ones out of the way to discuss, get the ball rolling before y'all leave.
We'll be probably done that week.
Okay.
You know, the 10th, I think, is where we actually have Commissioners' Court scheduled. I think I put that one in there to follow Commissioners' Court. So that 10th, we're still meeting, if we are. I mean, we have Commissioners' Court that Monday.
All right. Is that one for payroll or is that one for the, I didn't put it right?
I don't know if they're having ready for the 10th or not. That'd be a little...
I have one on 15.
There, so we'll have one on 10th, one on 14th. All right. But we'll do the major issues while y'all are here in the workshop, and then we don't, we won't be making any decisions except for court. I guess three of us will be present for court. Is it just Larry and Kenneth attending this?
Sure.
Okay. Good. All right.
And the prevailing wisdom, I hate to say wisdom in Austin in the same sentence, but the prevailing notion out of there is that even though House Bill 2 and Senate Bill 2 passed, they're connected to, they've connected those to Senate Bill 3, which is dealing with the school financial reform. And even though House Bill and Senate Bill 2 are pretty much in agreement with each other setting the 3.5% cap on us, the school finance is miles apart. So if they don't agree on 3, then 2 automatically goes away. And because of the timing, anything's going to happen for next year. So we're not going to be under that 3.5% this year. However, this will be our base year. Everything will be based off of what we're going to do this year. So just bear that in mind. But the comptroller has pretty much come out and said they can't switch now. It's too late. They can't get everything done. But if the legislature said, yes, do it now, the comptroller would say no.
Too late.
They can't do it. So...
And I'll keep my mouth shut about Austin.
Yeah.
Anything else?
That, that was it. That was the interesting thing, was that business as usual, 8% this year.
All right. Item number 13, discuss, approve new MOU agreement for Region 6 Tactical Special Operations Group. Alan, I believe he was at you? And in your and Dewayne's report, I read, I guess, that Steamville is wanting to pull out as well as this is...
Yes, Steamville and Eretown County are creating their own over there. So it's just going to be Hood, Granbury, and us.
Do we lose any equipment or gain anything with them pulling out? We have a motion...
They're on some things. There's, there's some explosive breaching stuff that they're working on right now to get some of our guys that are left trained and that we will be able, they'll continue that stuff. So they're working amongst themselves on our lab. So this is just mainly to get the contract or the MOU in place that just shows us Hood and Granbury.
This just cleans it up?
Yes, cleaning it up.
Okay. Any questions at all for Alan? Well, do I have a motion to move forward to the MOU agreement for Region 6 Tactical Special Operations Group?
I make a motion.
I have a motion by Kenneth. Do I have a second?
Sir?
I have a second by Larry. Any further questions or discussion for Alan? All in favor said motion? That's five, four, zero against. Thank you, Alan.
Appreciate it.
Item number 14, discuss, take action on authorization of pay payroll and associate expenses for the 515 2019 payday. Is that correct, Eddie?
Yes, that's correct.
Do I have a motion to pay payroll?
No, make a motion.
I have a motion by Kenneth. Do I have a second? I have a second by Wade. Do we have any further questions or discussion for Nikki or Brian? All in favor said motion? That's five, four, zero against. Item number 15, discuss, take action on renewal, number one, hot mix and cold lay.
Yes, sir. Volca Materials has indicated that they will extend that current contract one more time and for one more year, and that'd be for June 29th, or excuse me, June 2019 through the 31st of May 2020. And that's just for hot mix and cold lay.
Do I have a motion to extend the contract with Volca Materials for hot mix and cold lay? I have a motion by Wade. Do I have a second? I have a second by Kenneth. Any further questions or discussion for Brian?
Brian, what was, you said June 20th to what day?
I'm sorry, it's, it's actually June 1, 2019. Approved 31, May 2020.
All right. I have a motion and a second. Any further questions? All in favor said motion? Five, four, zero against. You want to let Melissa know that I'll sign this and after she...
Sure.
Files it, and then we'll have a copy of it. All right. And the second part of that is gas and oil.
Yes, sir. Gas, Hanstein Oil is, is willing to renew. Of course, that contract is the spot price plus a few portions of a cent that get added to the, to the gas price, so it's a commodity. to the, to the gas price, so it's a commodity. They're willing to extend for one more year, and again, the same dates as the, as the other contract for both in June one twenty nineteen, through thirty first of May through twenty twenty. And that's just for gas and diesel.
Do I have a motion to approve the gas and oil contract? I have a motion by Larry. Do I have a second? I have a second by Kenneth. Any further questions or discussion?
So you're saying this is a rack price?
Yes, sir.
But it varies with the market based on their own pay?
Through the Chicago Spot Exchange, yes, sir.
With delivery too, or just?
We do, but we able to spread those delivery costs. If we get multiple deliveries in a day, we spread that one delivery cost across.
Very down. Basically, this is the way it's been?
Way it's always been.
They've come with these for Granbury five a week, so they were appended with different loads.
Right. And, you know, they, they kind of bailed us out of the fire when the other gas supplier went feet up.
Within a twelve hour notice? All right, I have a motion and a second. I don't see that I have that contract, so I'll have to get one.
Yes, sir.
All right. All in favor said motion? That's five, four, zero against.
And our oil supplier, PSNE, they've indicated they want to extend, but they have not gotten us back the signed agreement, so we're just not going to, we'll just bring it back another time. We still got the rest of this month and.
All right, item number sixteen, approve budget transfers.
Email those to you over the weekend. Everything, like I said, my email was intra department, just cleaning up some line items for some expenditures, and then seven thousand dollars and change coming from your contingency account for the fire department.
Do I have a motion to approve the budget transfers?
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion by Dwayne. Do I have a second? I have a second by Larry. Any further questions or discussion for Brian? All in favor said motion? Five, four, zero against. Item number seventeen, pay county bills.
I sent you some numerous emails this, this go around because of logistics reasons. I will tell you that none of the, none of the reports that I sent you for the May ones, even though they were not reviewed, when I went and reviewed them over the weekend, there were no changes, so they were all correct. So altogether, two hundred and sixty thousand, six thirty-two and eight cents. And then Judge, there were some meals that were reimbursed that need to be written into the record. I think you have them on the top of that signature list.
All right, let me get the signature list back here, and I'll read it in. All right, Elroy Jackson, twenty-five dollars seventy-one cents, meals five two through five four. Elroy Jackson, twenty-three dollars and fifty-three cents, meals four, five and four twenty-three. Tonya Livingston, fifteen dollars and thirteen cents, meal four eighteen twenty nineteen. And Terry Early, sixteen dollars and fifty-one cents for a meal on four twenty-three twenty nineteen. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
All right, so the bills presented plus these meals. Do I have a motion to pay our bills?
I make motion to pay our bills.
I have a motion by Kenneth. Do I have a second? I have a second by Dwayne. Any further questions or comments? All in favor said motion? That's five, four, zero against. Number eighteen, approve county treasurer's report. We all had that, received that and reviewed it. I have a motion by Larry to accept and approve treasurer's report. Do I have a second? I have a second by Kenneth. Any further questions or comments for Nikki? We'll put Nikki on the spot. Just kidding. All in favor said motion? That's five, four, zero against. Number nineteen, accept approved monthly reports from other county departments.
I make motion to accept the reports from other county departments.
I have a motion by Kenneth to accept the monthly reports. Do I have a second? I have a second by Dwayne. Got paperwork going both ways, huh? Any further questions or discussion on the monthly reports? All in favor said motion? Five, four, zero against. Yeah, you said it'd be, not all the way. Oh, did I interrupt you in the middle of your signature? Sorry, man. I didn't hear that. Is that the right one? I can't tell whether the signature is.
It was, um, it's my doctor's signature.
That's a little, go back with that one. Sorry about that, Dwayne. Slow me down next time. All right. If there's no other action to be taken at this time, we will retire into executive session at ten oh eight AM on May thirteenth. And Brian, Phil sort of stayed close, so we've got some things to go over first, and then we'll invite you back in to discuss other area of it. Go over there. Mr. Lewis, this is strictly up to you.